This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called. Notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We are reconvening from executive session and we do have a little action to follow, but first we'll do our prayer and pledge by Reverend Hager.
Please join me in prayer according to your tradition as I pray according to mine. Heavenly Father, you are the life giver, the peacemaker, the creator, and the God of all comfort, and the source of all knowledge, power, love, justice, and peace. We're grateful that in your grace you've made a way for us to come to you through your, through faith in your Son. Father, we're grateful for each and every child you've placed under the care of Tyler ISD. We're thankful for their protection this year and pray that you would bring all except the seniors back next year, Father, that their summer would be one marked by fun and joy, by learning and development, by health, safety, and nutrition. That you plant the hope in them, continued learning is the pathway to a productive future. For our seniors, please protect them from themselves, from bad decisions, from the actions of others. Grant them wisdom beyond their years and the vision and understanding to see your plan and purposes for them. Father, for teachers and staff, I pray that they would know that children are a blessing from you. They are created in your image. They have infinite value and dignity and that we are but stewards of them for a short period of time. I thank you for the courage that you've granted our teachers and staff this year to persevere in the face of a pandemic, to fight for what's best for kids despite personal risk, and to care for all of them, sometimes even more than the other adults in their lives do. Father, I pray that you would empower them to finish strong and that this summer would be a time of refreshment and rejuvenation, a time of strengthening and professional growth, and that they would return later this summer eager to both love and teach well. And for the board and Dr. Crawford, the other trustees I've served with, grateful, most importantly, for their faith. Which makes the bond that we have, not just as fellow trustees, but as brothers and sisters who love each other despite our differences of opinion and background. Thankful for the opportunity to serve these last six years and for the fun and friendship in the midst of trying times. Father, I pray you would continue to give them the courage to seek what is right and true, to see what is best for the students of Tyler ISD, to not be distracted or waver in their pursuit of successful student outcomes for all students. Knit them together in love, strengthen their desire to serve you while serving Tyler ISD, and grant them the wisdom that only you can give to see the way ahead. Father, for our time here tonight, grant us wisdom and insight to lead well, to do so in a way that is pleasing to you. I pray this in the name of my Savior Jesus and the power of your Spirit. Amen.
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 Let the wings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you Reverend Hager for that powerful prayer. It has always been a strong suit, one that I will miss. Your words have always been poignant and well thought out, and I appreciate that about you. We do have some items coming out of executive session to take action on, and one of those, the item is to consider the approval to accept the resignation of a public officer for single member District Six being Reverend Fritz Hager Jr. And before I entertain a motion, Reverend Hager, it's been great. I think the six years that you have served will definitely go down as some of the most memorable six years of my life. This board and this district, since you've been on the board, has gotten better and better each year, and that's just, that's data. And you were a big part of that, and I do appreciate your service, and you can tell obviously where your heart is, and that's the most important part. And I think anybody who can't see that, especially after hearing your words tonight, is blind. So, anybody else have any comments before I entertain a motion on that item?
I'd like to say something, Fritz. I have considered it an honor to serve with you, and I call you my friend, and I hope that our friendship continues, and I wish you the best. Thank you so much for all that you've done. I'm gonna love you.
I just want to thank you Fritz for your service. You gave everything you had every day. No one could say that you didn't take the job seriously and you didn't do what you thought was best, and I admire that, and you've made us all better and echo what Trish and Wade have said. The school district's in a better place, and I appreciate that about you.
Fritz, I'll miss you, man. I'll miss you.
Okay. Mr. President?
Sorry, keep going.
Go ahead. I was gonna make a motion.
Reverend Hager, I don't have a stoplight story in Brownsboro like I had for Reverend Mason, but thank you for your allegiance on behalf of the administration. Thank you for keeping us accountable for our successful student outcomes. Privately, I've shared with you my feelings towards you, and those don't waver, and I had enough quote in our press release for you to understand that as well, but in all sincerity, our academic performance has trended upward. We're gonna continue to do that by the example that you led us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, with wishing nothing but the best for Reverend Hager and his family with great sadness, I move to accept his resignation from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do I have a second? Someone, please.
I second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you once again for your service to the district, Reverend Hager. Okay, moving on to special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our May District Students of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Brooklyn Solis, a second grade student at Bonner Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Anna Lee Avila, a sixth grade student at Three Lakes Middle School. At this time, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected by the display of their unique outstanding qualities. We believe these qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside of the classroom. First, we would like to recognize Brooklyn Solis, a second grade student at Bonner Elementary. Brooklyn shows true leadership by being the first person to help others without being asked. She takes the initiative to befriend new students and makes them feel welcome.
I like being a Bonner B of like doing fun stuff and helping other people in Bonner.
Brooklyn is also a very multi-talented student. She's worked hard to increase her reading level, and she also excels at science and art.
I got a reward for art. I did my owl that, no, not my owl, my, yeah, my owl, and then we had to paint in the stuff and we put our owls' hands like this, and then we, you had to put snow and stuff, and then I did, and then I won.
There's 18,000 students in Tyler ISD. That's a lot of students. 9,000 of those are in grades pre-K through fifth grade, and you're a secondary, right? You've been named the District Student of the Month. We're so proud of you. We've heard great things about you, Brooklyn. So congratulations on being named Student of the Month.
Our secondary student of the month is Anna Lee Avila, a sixth grade student at Three Lakes Middle School. Anna Lee is a phenomenal student and a hard worker. Her teachers say she always shows good citizenship by setting a great example in helping other students in her class.
I think it's important to help others because they really need help, and I guess you need to help them on what they don't get.
Anna Lee plays the trumpet in band and is also an avid reader. She says she loves learning and always enjoys all of her classes. For those looking to follow her example, she offers this advice.
I think making a great student is like helping others in need, and like the golden rule says, treat others the way you want them to be treated.
We have 18,000 students in our school system, 9,000 of which are in grades six through 12, and this month you've been named secondary student of the month for the entire school system. Congratulations, Anna Lee, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and character. Well done, students, and keep up the good work.
Now, we would like to celebrate our district teacher of the month. Louise Soto is a fifth grade math and science teacher at Austin Elementary School. Mr. Soto gives 100% to his job 100% of the time. He ensures his students receive their added services, and he pushes them to be better students by consistently maintaining high expectations. Mr. Soto is always prepared with great ideas and is ready to lend a helping hand to others, teachers, and staff on the campus. Most importantly, Mr. Soto builds strong relationships with his students and is dedicated to helping them succeed. Congratulations to Mr. Soto. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to all those who received those awards. Next on the agenda, we have Celebrate Freedom Week. Dr. Crawford?
Mr. Washman, trustees, thank you for providing our school system the opportunity to conduct Celebrate Freedom Week towards the back end of the school year. Normally, Constitution Week occurs at the beginning of the school year, but because of board proclamation and policy change, you saw the value in giving us meaningful educational experiences towards the back end of the school year, and Celebrate Freedom Week is that week. We do have a video to show you here in just a minute. It's a two-minute snippet of the videos that we did have. I did consider giving you 12 minutes, but we're gonna give you two minutes today. A little bit of a change-up this year that the board would really appreciate and the public would appreciate is that when you call an elementary school this year, the receptionist, more than likely, and has been provided the opportunity for this script, "Thank you for calling Tyler Elementary School," or insert school name here. "We have many activities and lessons for our students as Tyler ISD celebrates freedom this week." This is Marty, how may I help you? So if any community member calls one of our facilities this week, they will be, it will be confirmed by, from the receptionist all the way to the custodial staff, that we are having activities this week for Celebrate Freedom Week. So if anyone was to say, "I called a campus and the receptionist didn't know," that's just not accurate. Anyways, we're happy to provide this info, this video for you tonight about the, about highlights of what's going on this week. Mr. Boe?
Happy Liberty Day.
Today we focus on the Declaration of Independence and the Liberty Bill.
The Declaration of Independence expresses the ideas.
On which the United States was founded.
And the reasons for separation from Great Britain.
Liberty!
From all of us here at Jack Elementary, home of patriots.
Happy Patriot Day!
I can be a patriot by standing up for one another and being proud of our country.
I can be a patriot by going to events and celebrating American holidays.
Today is preamble day.
The first sentence of the Constitution.
Is called the preamble.
This school year, we also celebrate the 100th anniversary of woman's suffrage. We commemorate the passing of the 19th Amendment.
For ever protecting an American woman's rights to vote in elections.
Today, we salute our military heroes.
Each year, more than 79,000 people join the U.S. military.
For all the people who have served in the armed forces, I would like to thank you for fighting for our country.
Dad, thank you for everything you did for this country, and even though you were not home a lot when I was growing up, I still respect everything you did, and it means a lot that you actually served and did 27 years of serving and making sure our country was free. So thank you for that.
Happy Flag Day!
The U.S. flag symbolizes a lot about our country.
There are 13 stripes.
These represent the 13 original colonies.
They became the first 13 states in the United States of America.
Obviously, there's a lot more in between those, but those certainly the different days that we did celebrate, all the way from celebrating our servicemen and women as we lead up to Memorial Day, to the Constitution of all things. We certainly are proud to make sure that we have this opportunity to provide our students this week in a little bit different flavor than just your normal wrap-up at the end of the school year. Thank you trustees for giving me this time to present this.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Crawford. I got in on it a little bit by wearing my red blazer on Liberty Day today, so. Okay, next, we do have public participation. Looks like we will have a couple speakers. The first one being Darrell Davis. Come on up, Mr. Davis. How you doing this week?
I'm doing great. How y'all doing?
Good.
Thank y'all for allowing me this opportunity, to the board, trustees, to Superintendent Crawford, the rest of the staff. It's a blessing to be up here. I brought a issue before this board some three months ago, I guess, and I guess it must have irritated some people because I got barred from TISD school campus for being a convicted felon. I am a convicted felon, that's my past. It's gonna always be with me, it's nothing I can do about it. However, today I stand before the other two-time college graduate with a social arts degree and a bachelor's science degree in criminal justice. All I'm doing is concerned about the kids in my community. I don't mean to wet no feathers and bring no harm. However, if this was done on the table, I wouldn't have to come down here to present my plight, but since I did, I want my plight to be accepted as a human being and not as a convicted felon, because once you start barring convicted fel-, unless they're a sex offender, we don't want them around our children. However, the people that have carried out bad acts on these school campuses were not felons at all. In fact, most of them were upstanding citizens at one point, or either a school kid, right? And my thing is, I wanna help the kids. Sometime I'll be driving and the Holy Spirit move on me, and I might stop by a school campus and give away four or five boxes of face masks. I give away backpacks and school supplies every August at my annual back-to-school fund day, and bicycles for Christmas, and I wanna be a part of the TISD community where I can help better serve my kids, because the road that I went down, I prefer to know one child what goes down that road. And I come from a two-parent household, right where I had a mother and a father. My daddy was the second black engineer on the Cotton Bell Railroad, and my mother worked in the TISD school district and in the medical field. And look where I wind up at, in the concrete jungle for 18 years, six months, three weeks, and five days for a crime that never happened. But it wasn't my first time in trouble. That comes from being disobedient and hard-headed. And right now, my life is on a good track, and I wanna participate in what's going on in the Tyler Independent School District, and there's a lot of issues over at that North Side High School that need to be addressed, and I plan on addressing it another time. I just wanna be accepted on these campuses. The door opened, I talked to the superintendent, he told me the protocol that I, that I need to do. I talked to a couple of more trustees, they told me what I needed to do, and I wanna move forward. And I wanna thank Dr. Crawford for accepting me and giving me what he did on that telephone, and he surprised me the other day when he saw me walking downtown across the street. Now, I do break the law a little bit, 'cause I was jaywalking, but other than that, Danny Brown over there, he knew me from when I was a kid growing up, and that's about it. And congratulations to Ms. Atkins for being re-elected to the district, and I wanna be a part and tutorial for the kids on the North Side. And I ask if y'all have a position or something that's open up that where I can be effective out there in the community, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, next we have Terry Bonner. How you doing, Mr. Bonner?
I'm all right. How about you?
Doing all right.
Like that blazer.
Thank you.
I'm just playing.
Patriot Day. Hey, I can't, can't comment.
Good evening. Last time I was here, I made a lot of demands, and I wanna clarify that. Still make those, I still have the demands, but I wanted to let you know, I'm speaking for the parents, I'm speaking for the students when I come up here, for real. They contact us. So, tonight, we wanna follow up on where we are with the transparency of the redistricting process. We still do want that to be public information, we want that to be shared with the public, and if y'all don't know about it, we wanna learn together, but we want the redistricting process fully disclosed, transparent to the public. Please and thank you. We will keep on asking and keep on driving towards that. Secondly, I am a witness to the school-to-prison pipeline here in Tyler, Texas, okay? I see it daily. I am seeing it currently. I'm seeing it on the news every day, and it starts a lot of the time in the schoolhouse. Not saying that the home environment doesn't contribute, but a lot of police contact, especially for black and brown children, come at the schoolhouse first or within school-type settings. And this process and/or disposal of certain students is starting to take effect all over town. You cut on the news, that is, nine times out of 10, I had them within the last seven years, TISD had them within the last seven years, in a disciplinary environment. I think there's a lack of understanding of children of color by some of the educators. I'm not saying this is a horrible, horrific thing, I'm saying that it is evident. You know, when you take a little boy from left, I mean, right brain activities to in the third, fourth grade, you tell him to do left brain activ-, uh, left brain activities and sit down and behave, and then all of a sudden, when he doesn't, he becomes a discipline issue, or something's wrong with him and we wanna get him diagnosed and push him in the special ed. And a lot of time, those children are children of color, and it starts this horrible cycle, especially on the discipline side, to where they go into this horrible cycle of DAP and suspension and ISS and things that stop education. They stop education. So when you stop education and you re-enter this child into an education environment, this interest starts to happen. So, TISD has a practice of this, I've been a witness to it, and I've definitely spoken at length about it to administrators. Tonight, I'm asking for a review into the discipline practices of TISD by you guys. I am asking for a specific review of the practices and the leadership of the DAP campus. Now, there are, there are several things that have been reported and confirmed at the DAP campus. I can say they're confirmed because I reported them and I spoke to the administrators that confirmed them, and these things are still going on. This isn't some witch hunt. These are things that I'm still in contact with administrators about. Administrators, the proper channel, not the rumor channel, okay? Community members are contacting me, parents are contacting me. These stays at DAP are too long. They are maladaptive for educating children, and they're just becoming, playing out tragic in some cases and silly in a lot of cases. Imagine your child being held on a DAP campus for years behind, they just can't act right in the classroom, but all the time, we know that DAP houses, I'm not gonna say them in public, but you know what we house over, do what they house over there. And I'm not saying that that's bad, but do you want your children with that inhaling that, learning new behaviors for years? Some of these children are stuck for years in this cycle. This is the truth. This is confirmed. This needs to be investigated. Thank y'all very much.
Okay, hey, thanks. Before you go away, and I can't respond on things, but I can ask a clarifying question, and I wanna do that.
Yes, sir.
And it's not about the second thing, it's about the first thing. When you, when you talk about redistricting, I just wanna, I wanna know what you're referring to.
The gerrymandering, sir, the redrawn, redrawing of the district lines.
You're talking about our boundary lines?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if you were talking about like our seats, our individual trustee.
Oh, no, sir. I'm talking about, you know, the rumors that run amok in our community that they're swooping up children from over here to place them over there, and then there's a flight by some residents to private schools, which is, and it's starting to look true, but yeah, we want transparency on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are moving on to our approval of minutes, and we have approval of minutes from the board workshop and the regular meeting in April. I'll take a motion and enter, to entertain on that item.
I move, we approve the minutes from April, is that 9th to 19th?
8th.
8th to 19th, there we go.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carry, I mean, all opposed? Okay, ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on to our continuous improvement and student outcomes, Goal One and Two, CLI Engage, Renaissance, and Benchmark updates.
As part, part of the gore, excuse me, board monitoring calendar, we do have updates on Goal One and Two, which is our CLI engage, just for the little guys and gals. You know, our Renaissance star, and then our benchmark data. We have Dr. Kristi Hansen, who'll be providing this report along with information provided, an explanation provided by Dr. James Kurton, Director of Assessment and Accountability for the District. Dr. Hansen?
Thank you. Dr. Crawford, Mr. Washman and board, thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you about the end-of-the-year data. We've been visiting this data all year, so this is the, the last part of it, and we just wanted to kinda give you the summary, and we're going through three different groups of data tonight, so I'll, I will sort of try to help through that. The first, there are three, there are three types of data tonight, the CLI Engage data for the little guys, as Dr. Crawford said, the Renaissance data, which used to be the MAP data, but this year, we've gone to Renaissance, and the benchmark data. So let's just dive right in, and let's remember that CLI is the CIRCLE data. It is for our pre-K Head Start kids, our little guys. We do assess them three times per year. There are a lot of different skills that are assessed that I'll talk to you about tonight. This does not project STAR, so it doesn't give us any indication of how well kids are gonna do in STAR. It simply talks about the skills and where they are at the time, and it, this is presented as cohort data, so we only are giving you data for the kids who tested at the beginning of the year. There are other kids that tested as they came back, but this particular data tonight is only cohort data from the beginning. So here we are, and we gave you beginning, middle, and end of the year data there, and these are the specific skills, the rapid letter naming. You can still see that we got a You can still see that we got a lot of improvement, which we would anticipate and we're very happy with. As I talked about at the beginning of the year, that social emotional and that early writing, we, we feel like we have a calibration problem at the beginning of the year as far as the training and how that test is given. It is observational data only, very subjective. So we know that we've got some training and some calibration that we're going to need to do to see if we can correct that. I don't, I think we, you know, I think we're going to really have to work on that as far as what really is appropriate at the beginning of the year as compared to the end of the year. And so, so that's where we are with that. Really, really excited about the look of that data. We did break this out so that you could see the different types of pre-k, pre-K kids we have, the tuition kids, the non-tuition and our head start students. That's often data that you guys have asked so that you could kind of see where we are. And, and you can tell that the kids often start at different levels as well. And, and you know that the poverty levels of those different kids, the head start are our kids with the highest poverty level, our pre-K qualifying kids are kids that are still considered in poverty, but not, not the level, and then our tuition based students. So as you know, sometimes skill gaps can be, um, can go along with poverty levels and that certainly is shown in this data today. And we also broke the data out by demographics, so you could see where we are in our progress there. And again, very happy with our progress in our circle data with our pre-K. We feel like our, um, the consistency that we have across the board, everyone is using the same curriculum. Uh, we're monitoring those classrooms consistently so that no matter what class you're in, you get a high quality education. And, um, so we feel really good about some of the changes. And we will be making a curriculum change next year. And as we had an adoption, you guys adopted the new curriculum for next year. So that's a scholastic product. And so we should see some consistency there as well. We are using a, a curriculum that has, that's about nine years old, um, in pre-K, although we've done some tweaks to it, but it is, it is a little bit, it needs a little updating. So we'll be implementing a new curriculum next year. So hopefully that'll help us with, with our data as well. So we're moving on to the next, are there questions about the circle pre-K data that I can help you before we move to the next set?
Any questions on the circle pre-K data? All right.
So the next set of data that we're going to look at is the Renaissance, and that is our K through eight. And we look at math and reading, this is assessed three times a year. And one of the things about this test that's different than the MAP test is that it is adaptive. And so what happens is, as the student does well on this test, the test gets progressively more and more difficult until it becomes too difficult for them to be able to actually answer any more questions. We have found that to be a little bit of a challenge for kids because they get pretty frustrated. So we're having to do a little work around, um, kind of that new assessment piece of this year. And, and I think I talked a little bit about that when we had some kids that were taking the test at home this year. And the parents were like, oh, the test is too hard for them. And we were like, well, if they're, if they're taking it by themselves, it should, they should be able to get finished with that test pretty quickly. So, and anyway, this data does, will provide us some STAR proficiency. And we use this particular set to help us with our, with your goals that, that you adopted, uh, goal one and two. Again, this is cohort data, so we do have a lot more kids who took the test at the end of the year than took it at the beginning, but we're only presenting the cohort data to you tonight. So just a quick reminder that, um, of, of how we're looking at this, that passing, the masters is passing, it just, it means the students are college and career level. They need no academic intervention. The, the meets means that they're on grade level and they might need some work and some skill help here and there. And approaches is still passing and it is still college and career ready. It just means that we're going to have to pay attention to some specific areas in order to get them there. So just take a look at the fall data versus the spring data. We didn't put the middle of the year data in here because it would just get so long for you. And that this kind of gives you a little bit of a, a little bit of a peek into it. Uh, no surprise, when I came to you in the middle of the year, second grade was a struggle. It continued to be a struggle. We know we're going to have to look at both curriculum, uh, in first grade and curriculum in second grade to see where our gaps are there as well as possible implementation to see if, if the rigor in second grade is kind of where we need it to be. So the campuses are looking at their data and we're looking at that from the district perspective as well to see where, where that is. When, as you know, when you see a big gap like that across the district, there's usually a systemic issue that we need to address. So we're looking at that. And then middle school, again, no surprise, very similar to the middle of the year where we really flatlined there and we didn't see a lot of progress. We didn't see a decline, but we didn't see a lot of progress either. So we'll, we'll look at that and see if we're really getting those, that vertical alignment ready in the elementary so that the kids are ready to perform in the middle schools. Again, we broke this out for you according to the goals so that you could see if we hit the targets. And in kindergarten first, we're right on target. And exactly where we said we wanted to be at the end of this year, second grade, we did not meet the target. And then we broke that out for you. Let's see, that was by our demographic of African American, Hispanic and white, two or more races and economically disadvantaged. And then, um, those special ed numbers are really good because as you know, when we bring that, uh, results driven federal data to you, we, we kind of get dinged on those special ed numbers. So we feel hopeful that those special ed numbers are coming along. And our ELS have been performing, um, in the last couple of years. So we feel really good about that data as well. Those, that was reading, this is math. So our math scores look really good. Um, second grade, again, we, we got some bumps there. So we're really, our concern in second grade has more to do with our reading and we feel like that science of teaching reading is something that's just getting us bogged down in second grade. Um, so, but our math looks pretty good. And again, we're flatlined in middle school, so we have to look to see what's happening as far as kids being ready for their, uh, for those assessments in middle school. So right on target in kindergarten and first again, in all areas. And on target in our special pops as well. Questions about the Renaissance data?
Anybody?
Dr. Hansen?
Yes, sir.
The, um, going back to the, the phonological awareness data from circle, how do you feel that predicts kindergarten phonological awareness? Uh, assuming we're talking about fourth graders going into kindergarten. Do you feel like those kids are likely to continue those skills over? And we should show then kind of a bump at the beginning of year proficiency for those skills?
I, I believe the science of teaching reading is finally getting into the pre-K, uh, classrooms. I would say, Reverend Hager, this is probably the first solid year that we've done that really consistency, consistently, um, in pre-K. We started it last year, then COVID hit and all the things. So this, this year with the consistency, um, across the campuses, the principals really took hold of those pre-K classes and did a lot of work with their teachers. I, I feel like we're going to see a bump in our, in our PA, in our, in our science, in our foundational skills. Um, and you know, as you know how important that is, right? That rapid letter recognition and the, and the letter sound in those early years is the foundation of everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay.
Do you feel like, um, with moving from MAP to Renaissance, um, that it, it's a little more pointed, uh, as far as to the STAR and, and everything like that, as far as the Renaissance test and the data we get from it?
We, we feel like the alignment as far as aligned with the TEES, the state standards is accurate data. The test is very different, so we have a little bit of a transition year as far as being able to, with the kids, with the adaptive test and, uh, the way the test is administered. Um, so I'll know more next year when we're into our second year, but we, we like the test better, if that makes sense, the assessment itself. Um, the process of the assessment is, is taking a little bit of an adjustment for us.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
I have a middle schooler and he didn't, he doesn't like, he didn't like it. So I don't know if that's some of the reason for some of that, it's just he got frustrated with the, the way, the way it was and just he didn't like it.
My guess is it's because he did well. So, so as they do well, the test sort of lasts longer and gets much harder. And that is new, whereas the MAP, it was the test and that was it. They took the, they answered the questions and then they were finished with it. So when we, the test is supposed to take about 20 minutes, but as a student does really well, the test gets more and more difficult and sometimes that test can go a long time. So now the idea is that it starts them off next time about where they're supposed to start. But if a student has made a lot of progress, then they may start off kind of easy. And then it, so that piece, we've really, we haven't gotten used to that yet and we really haven't trained our kids because you know, the STAR test doesn't do that. Our six weeks exams don't do that. You just answer the 20 questions or the 50 questions and then you're finished. So I can see why it's been somewhat difficult for, for the kids to adapt, especially a middle schooler because his goal is to get finished, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Question in regards to that. Are the students made aware of that progression before taking the test?
Well, as I said, it's, it's been new for all of us. So in some ways, it's been a learning curve for the teachers and for us as trainers. And, and so we're, we'll know more next year, Mr. Newsom, as we get better at it.
Well, just in, in general, in explaining the exam, you know, making sure that they understand that it's going to get progressively harder, but if you're doing well, you may test longer. So I think in preparing them, if you're able to do that, you know, they have certain guidelines that you have to follow. I think it would be good for the student to know that in advance.
No question, yeah. Yeah, agreed, for sure. So the benchmark test, I want to talk a little bit about that to sort of set this test up. The benchmark test actually, um, is not necessarily a projection of how the kids are going to do on the assessment. Sometimes we set it up like that. It is a released STAR test. The, the goal for this really is to assess where the kids are and where their skill gaps are so that we can intervene before the STAR test. And sometimes I think we give the impression that we're going to take the benchmark in the spring and project where the kids are and be able to guess how well they're going to do. And, and really, that's not our goal for giving the benchmark at all. The goal for giving the benchmark in February or March is to find out where the skill gaps are so that we can get in there and do some tutoring and some small group instruction and have them ready for that assessment, um, so that we don't do what some people accuse us of, which is spend all year teaching to the test. Because truly, we don't do that. Uh, we teach the curriculum and then we take that benchmark test and then we intervene. Excuse me. So, um, it is, it is a released STAR test and it's for every grade level and/or subject that's going to be tested. It is used for planning, um, and it, it's presented relative, this year, we're going to present it relative to the 2018, 19 scores because we didn't have any prior to that. The other thing I want to tell you about the benchmark scores is that different campuses took them at different times this year. Some took them really early in the spring so that they could have a long review or they could do small group instruction. And others took them like four weeks before the test. Um, so different campuses really personalized it this year according to what worked for them. So just keep all of that in mind. There's nothing really standardized about this data. And, but here's where we are. And, and even though there's a lot of pink there, which indicates there's a decline, when you think about everything that's happened between the time that that benchmark was taken in 2019, I really didn't feel very discouraged about this data. Um, because there was just not these huge grossly large declines that you think, oh my gosh, we're never going to be able to re, regain that ground. Um, so when you look at it, it does give you some indication of, okay, there were some drops, but it's not something that's not insurmountable. And I can tell you that the campuses have been working really hard, teachers and principals and, uh, working so hard, pulling small groups, tutoring Saturdays, evenings, everything else to help give kids every advantage on that STAR test. And we took that test last week, um, and then some test the week before, so, um, we'll have that data for you soon. And then there is the middle school data, even some little green in there, y'all.
Let me interject real something real quick. Remember now, we, we've spent a whole lot of time over this in the last six or seven years. What I really get interested in is not from the year to year, apples to oranges of grade seven math. Even though we had a bump from last year's grade seven, really those last year's grade seven kids are now in eighth grade.
Mm-hmm.
So last year's grade seven math kids were to 37. You jump them into 2021, they're to 65.
That's the 18, 19, so it's really would be the sixth graders.
Two years ago, I'm sorry, oh, sixth grader. So 56 to 65. So in a normal year, it'd be that.
Right, exactly.
So, again, this is, this is more of a metric and markers that we use internally to see if we're teaching the curriculum, where the gaps are for that year. It's not a side by side of how they're going to perform and comparisons to the, the year before or two years ago.
Right.
I think we, as long as we explain that to the public and the board, we kind of give a better understanding of, oh my gosh, the sky's falling or, oh my goodness, look at the jump that they made. It's really not designed for that way as far as the benchmarks go.
It, it literally is just sort of getting on the scale and finding out where you are so that you know what you need to do to deal with it. I probably shouldn't have used that analogy, but there it is. Okay. And so here are the high school scores. And again, if you consider where, where we were as far as kids coming to school and everything this year, I just, I didn't feel completely discouraged about, about these numbers this year.
So we've gotten the EOC scores for this year already and any of our dips compared to some of the suburban metropolitan dips are about the same. So I feel really good about where we're at as far as performance goes with EOCs. And as far as our peers are concerned, I, I'm, I'm feeling very confident, the comparison groups that we are always up against feels pretty good, I think. So in saying that, these benchmarks are probably, and y'all will see those, I think, at the next meeting, is that right? Is it the workshop or at the regular meeting?
I think it's the regular meeting.
Okay. So that'd be the June regular meeting, we'll have all the STAR data compiled and it'd be returned to us from the state, right? Like three through 12 or three through 11?
Correct. We've gotten pretty much all EOC data back and we'll have all STAR data back by the middle of next week when we get the writing back.
Yeah, so we'll, until we get the, we do get the writing back?
We'll get fourth, we get all, everything except fourth and seventh writing this week, I believe.
Okay.
We have all third through eighth grade, except fourth and seventh writing.
Good, okay. So in saying that, just the little date, the little time I've spent with it so far, that's about where we're at. I mean, I, I, I think we're pretty good. Ron, you, you saw that data better than I did. Mr. Jones, excuse me. As far as this year, as far as the EOCs go, that benchmark data there is about ballpark of where we're at. I think we're a little higher in English one.
Yeah, I don't think we dropped that much.
We were higher, we were, English two, actually, we made improvement in English two of all things this year. So kudos to that, but district wide, kudos to that bunch. That's what, that's the group that actually skipped the English one and algebra one and biology EOCs. So there was, there's that cohort.
If you were a freshman last year, you scored because you didn't have to take algebra, biology or English one.
So they're up now to take.
English two and US history their June of the year.
And so, yeah, they gotta, they, they only had to take 40% of the EOCs. So that, that's pretty comparable to what, to what we are experiencing here. And so I'm not saying I feel good about that data, but I think I said this the last time we went over this, it's not insurmountable. We start talking about the COVID slide and the dips and everything, we expected a little bit. We're in really good position, I think. We're in really good position, I think, to have a really good year next year because we're not that far behind. So kudos to our teachers and our students for getting back to school this year.
So you attribute the, the lower scores to the COVID slide? I mean, it's kind of interesting seeing real data. I mean, there's no other explanation.
Yeah, I think distraction more than anything. I mean, with all the different protocols we have in place, maybe teachers in and out, maybe students in and out, maybe just a lot of other just societal distractions that were going on. I think we had a little bit of that impacting our performance this year.
And then no school from March through the summer, obviously.
Yeah.
And then we had, um, we had a lot of kids, I mean, we brought them back the, the third six weeks, but, but that's still 13 weeks that, that they were out. And then once they did come back, we did have some, you know, quarantining and these, those things happened. We did, I thought we did a remarkable job.
Yeah. I don't think it's, I think when we get it all compiled, I just got a gut feeling that we're not going to be these double digit 20% dips. You know, if we're starting to talk about single digit dips in an unscored year, I think that's a win for us.
Also remember this year, again, I'm not an excuse maker. I just want to lay it on the table. This will be the first year that the kids have taken the test all on the computer. So just the format of the test is really different. What?
I was asking Mr. Martinez, have he heard anything about that from his? Cause I, I got a chewing from my 11-year-old about it.
It's different. And the way that you teach kids to take the test online is, is very different than what we're used to. You know, we used to teach them to underline the key words and, and all the things. But, um, but there's, you can't do that. The calculator is online and it's a different format. So, um, this was the year to do that. And again, not making excuses, just want to just put it out there so you know that that's another piece that, that kids are just getting, kids and teachers are getting used to.
The, the reading passages is what I heard about. Like you can't, can't flip back and just read it again or whatever. Like you have to, you have to read it, understand it and then answer it.
All I heard about was changing the background color.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That is great.
Change the background color on it. Okay, good.
And you know, it may or may not be a big, big deal that kids did their writing passages, you know, typing it online rather than writing it out. I mean, I, we, we will, we'll see.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions, any other questions regarding this matter?
Maybe the last time I get to talk about this issue. Let me just commend the district for, A, opting into STAR and knowing exactly where we stand. Uh, a lot of our peers passed on that opportunity. And so, um, what I heard tonight was not excuse making. It was a clear-eyed assessment of where our kids stand, where our gaps are with our teachers and where our gaps are in our curriculum. And then coupled with the things we've talked in the past about what we're doing this summer, I feel like this is a, a good assessment of where we are and a realistic plan to continue to improve.
I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to next year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your presentation. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Kurden.
Moving along to, uh, our business legal finance consent agenda. Uh, obviously we'll pull, pull B, which is, uh, the approval of gifts and donations. But I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve items A through H with the exception of B.
I'll sub move.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it and the motion carries. Uh, moving on to item B, which is gifts and donations.
So excited to bring this to the board tonight for possible action, possible approval. Again, we say this every time, we get large chunks of money that's provided to us in a very philanthropic way. Some of these enterprising dollars that can supplement our curricula that the normal district budget does not provide for. We have two that are from the Tyler ISD Foundation. One for $5,858.64 for Teen Can Make It Happen Program. Teen Can Make It Happen Program. And then $10,000 from the Tyler ISD Foundation for the Tyler ISD Literacy Bus Wrap. And then $5,432 from TAB and Bonnie Bell for the Tyler ISD Literacy Bus. Um, that's a, I think everybody can get behind that because it's tangible. You can see it, it's going to be all over town and it's going to be deployed especially uh, into the pockets of our school system where we need to make reading, um, great again, make, make reading important. Um, yeah, make it important. So in saying that, we want to make sure that we thank the Tyler ISD Foundation and TAB and Bonnie Bell.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion on this item?
I move that we approve this item.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it and the motion carries. And thank you so much to Tyler ISD Foundation and TAB and Bonnie Bell. We do appreciate y'all's dedication to the district. It's amazing what, what, uh, what y'all do. So, okay, we're moving on to our curriculum construct, instruction consent agenda. And I didn't get any, uh, anybody that wanted to pull anything, so I'll go ahead and take a motion to approve items A through K.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it and the motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to our discussion of ESSER free grant funds. Dr. Crawford?
Yes, we actually have Jared Bitter's here with us tonight to provide some type of supplemental, um, information or data for you. Also Tasha Bjork, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. We presented a little preview of, of a kind of a coming attractions. Uh, I think at the last regular meeting, I believe that's where it was done at. Um, since then, we've actually been deployed, uh, these, not the, not the dollars, but the grant opportunity from the state of Texas, um, from the feds through the state of Texas. And so part of that has to be, um, engagement with the community in regard to what those funds could be used for. So tonight, this is part of meeting, being compliant, um, at a public meeting to be able to provide the, uh, the first inclination about how we'll go about gathering that information from the community as far as what, where they see that those funds could be made. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bitter to kind of take you through the PowerPoint. That way y'all can ask some questions for us. But again, this is the first, um, salvo for elementary and secondary school emergency relieved, relief three. This is 3.0. 2.0 is still hung up in Austin. Remember 1.0 was finished, was, was used to plug the gap last year at the very end of the year. Then they skipped over 2.0, then they got to 3.0. And so here we are talking about SER three funding. Mr. Bitter?
Well, thank you, Dr. Crawford, President Washman, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and present just a little bit of an overview of SER three funding and what that might look for us and, uh, some of the things that you will see, uh, from us in the coming days. All right, so the intent and purpose of the American Rescue Plan, uh, is to help safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and address the impact of the coronavirus pandemic on students. And one of those, I think we'd all, uh, you know, give ourselves a pat on the back and say that we've done, uh, safely reopen our schools. Uh, but we do want to sustain that and certainly address the impact of the pandemic and, uh, learning loss within our student body. Uh, and you'll see throughout the plan and, and the things that you hear from us in the coming days, uh, or coming months, that there is in fact a prioritized focus on low-income students and students with disabilities. Uh, and that certainly mirrors a little bit of what we presented to you, uh, last month in regard to some of the direction we would like to go. So some of the requirements for this money, uh, 20%, a full 20% at least has to be dedicated to learning loss mitigation. Uh, and that done through evidence-based interventions. Uh, some of those we've talked a lot about, uh, here at the board meetings and, uh, certainly in our building, but after-school programming, uh, extended day opportunities and really robust summer programming. Uh, one of the, another requirement is, is that we have to have opportunity for the public to provide input on, uh, what they think is important and how we might utilize some of those dollars. And engage in meaningful consultation, uh, with all stakeholder groups within the school community. A return to school plan will be posted on the website when that is ready and available.
We had never, we hadn't ever done that before.
What's that?
Your return to school plan posted on the, remember the guys, a lot of this stuff came from the feds. So they're worried about, worried about Chicago and San Francisco and others that have not come out of hiding yet.
So like Dr. Crawford said, there has been kind of a blanket applied, uh, and we seem to be in pretty good shape as it relates to return to school plans. And hopefully it is not quite as lengthy, uh, as the one we had to move through last school year and getting ready for, uh, kids to come back and the protocols that we would need in place. Uh, and then we will, uh, submit that application for, uh, the dollars that have been made available to us by July 1st so that we can access those funds for this year. So a few big areas of focus for us, uh, purchasing deployment of technology. We want to continue to expand that, uh, to increase the blended learning experience that our students have, uh, expand access to broadband where we can and make sure that we've got devices in folks' hands and resources, uh, that can eliminate some of that equity gap that we see from time to time in that area. Uh, next one is a big one, uh, providing mental health services and supports. Uh, this one has been big and I think you guys have heard a lot about it, um, here recently. We've certainly spent some time, uh, reviewing some of the things that we have in place and then looking at where we want to go in this area. And so you'll hear more about that. Uh, summer learning and supplemental after-school programming. Uh, we have worked pretty hard, I think, to make sure our summer learning and after-school programming is quality for our kids. And we want to, uh, really expand that and make sure that, uh, the kids who need to be accessing those services are accessing them and make sure that, uh, qu- uh, quality there continues to increase. Uh, strategies and activities to address learning loss. And so that, that's a pretty, uh, vague statement, but that's a huge umbrella. Uh, there are a lot of things that are going to fall under that, some of those being staffing resources, uh, different types of intervention resources that we talked about, uh, previously. Some of those that we, uh, may have access to on a certain level, but want to expand in the district. And so, uh, as we look at, uh, continue to look at the needs of our kids and areas of the district where we need to provide support, uh, we'll, we'll access some of those funds in that area. And then qualifying facility repairs, improvements and projects. A lot of that stuff related to, uh, really clean and safe operation within the buildings, some HVAC projects, different things like that would apply, uh, or qualify. Uh, and so you'll hear more about that, uh, as it comes before you in the coming months.
If it becomes, if it comes before you in the next several months. We, we got some ideas about retrofitting some, retrofitting some HVAC for, Tim, ionization of HVAC systems, but all of our HVAC systems are fairly new. So retrofitting those does not cost quite significant, like maybe some other school systems are going to throw a lot of money at this stuff, right?
That's correct. And it also allows for like, uh, window replacement groups, uh, can also be considered as improvements in the environmental bio organization, which today's air, air conditioning needs come with that standard, so over hospitals in good shape. And even as we go back in our preventive maintenance in our early schools and we, as those become in their life cycles, which they grew up in this life cycle, we can use SER funds to upgrade those air conditions too.
So we can stretch our preventive maintenance dollars even further. Um, one other thing up there about, um, mental health services and supports. If you think about this, it's been on, on our radar now before COVID. And since we did bring our kids back for the most part, not saying we're not worried about some of the psychological effects, effects of the pandemic, because there's a lot of them, uh, from a lot of different things that we've put in place here to tackle the pandemic. But if you start talking about safety and security, that's been a, for now, the last 20 years, ever since Columbine, 20-plus years, something we worried about, the mental health of our students. Um, also the, the fact we heard speaker tonight talking about restorative discipline practices. They don't just send them to DAP for the heck of it, but that's where we can provide some social, emotional supports to our campuses for the behavior of students on those campuses. So in saying that, I think there's an opportunity here with this SER funding to be able to provide some of those supports that the campuses need the most.
And so a few communications efforts, uh, related to SER three funding and the return to school, uh, two things that, two surveys that will be posted on the website. Uh, one of those being a commit, a parent and community stakeholder survey, uh, which , uh, plan for that is to go live tomorrow, uh, so you should see that pop up. And then our return to learn plan survey, uh, which be, will be coming just a little bit later on. Required postings for the website, our SER three funds plan, how are we going to use this money? Where are those dollars going to be spent? And then obviously the return to school plan that, uh, you've heard about a couple of times tonight.
Just before you go back, that second bullet on the return to learn plan survey, since it's up here, I'll go ahead and talk about it. Um, we, we turned in, what, two weeks ago, the, the week that y'all voted to suspend the, the mask, uh, requirement to make it optional, we turned in two district-wide, excuse me, one district-wide COVID case that week. And then last week, we, we turned in two. So the data and the science on our side right now, I'm glad we're not going to have that in our return to learn plan, sir, for the survey. Cause that would have been fun to, uh, answer those. So appreciate the community, the 80% of our community that, that were reasonable in putting up with our protocols. And then the 10% on either side, we understand your frustration one way or the other, but uh, please understand it wasn't because of a personal preference, one way or the other. It was so that we could have a successful school year that we did have this year. Our return to learn plan should look significantly different if the data and the science is on our side when we get back. Because that's what we made decisions with this last time, not emotions and not political ideologies. There you go. For those of y'all that are watching.
Sound like you rehearsed that one.
I've, I've typed it out more than I've actually said it, so I guess that's good practice.
Mr. Burkeville? Anybody have any questions or comments?
There was, um, technology on here, but are we waiting for legislative action on like a remote option or?
We're planning. We actually are, we did submit to TEA about, um, the opportunity for our Blade Digital Education Program to, to possibly be active for next year. Uh, we're, we are waiting for some statute to come out, some legislative action to come out to see what those rules are and some TEA rules as we go forward as well. We could easily have, um, a virtual option just as, next year, just as easy as we could not have a virtual option next year. We're working on it, we're building it. Um, I think it's a, it's an innovative thing to think about. And y'all will get more updates throughout the summer in regard to, to our progress, uh, of implementation and deployment or lack thereof. So, um, yes, we are at, waiting for Austin to kind of get through with it, with what they're doing, but we are already in communications with TEA about that as well. Um, it's interesting about some of the SER funding here, some of the expenditures that we've had over the last few years are eligible, um, through this as well. So any local tax dollars that we might've spent in regard to buying devices, et cetera, can now be, um, actually procured through this, um, late, uh, kind of after the fact. School buses as well, anything that, yeah, there's, there's some other M and O types of, of items that can actually go into this SER funding if, if we choose to do so, if y'all choose to do so.
Okay. Well, I look forward to figuring that out, working with our community on where to best put the, those funds to use. And I trust you guys will use it in a diligent manner and effectively, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bitter. Uh, we do have future business coming up and, and one thing I failed to mention earlier because we were all talking to you, Reverend Hager, is, uh, I will say to our community that, um, due to Reverend Hager's resignation, we will have to, or may choose to, I should say, appoint, uh, somebody in his place. And, uh, I think we're going to open up a, a timeline from now until 12:00 PM on May 28th. That's a couple of weeks. Uh, to anybody who's interested in that position can submit, uh, letter of intent or, uh, to the district, letter of interest, I should say, I saw LOI, I'm so used to football talk, uh, letter of interest to the district. And, um, at 12:00 PM on May 28th, that window will shut, uh, at which point we can review, uh, if any come in, but I assume we might have one or two. review if any come in, but I assume we might have one or two. And then we'll decide after that. We have a couple of meetings coming up in June, and there will be an interview process to follow after we get some letters in. And, but that's in the future. I just wanted everybody to know, from now till 12:00 PM on May 28th is the timeline where we'll be accepting letters of interest.
I'm going to send that letter of interest to the board secretary.
Okay.
At Gina dot O R, at TylerISD.org.
Gina dot O R R.
At TylerISD.
TylerISD.org is where you will send that letter.
If you go to the school board page on our website, underneath elections, that information is there as well, in case anybody's watching and needs to hear this. So, future business, we got a lot of graduations coming up. We got Rise and Early College High School and Legacy and Tyler High. It should be interesting this week with the weather. You want to speak on that?
Yeah, just real quick, we did send out a press release today or media advisory.
Same?
Yes. Okay, we sent out something to the media today that announced that I think the campuses are already starting to send some of those out. The first couple of items that are the most important is we did move Rise, Early Grad School, and then Early College High School inside Tyler High School's Martin L. Edwards Theater. We'll be hosting those graduations for us on Wednesday and Thursday night due to inclement weather that's projected. Friday and Saturday, regular schedule, but we do have backup plans as well. But certainly want to get to the first couple, and that's Wednesday and Thursday. That's a big change. They are not at Rose Stadium. They are at Tyler High School. I think we changed the times. It's 7:30 PM now and not 8:00 PM since it's not outside.
Is that right?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Washman.
Good deal. 95. And we have a board workshop on the 10th and June 10th and a regular meeting on the 21st. So that's what we got going on. Having said that, I'll go ahead and take a motion for adjournment.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Reverend Hager. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, meeting is adjourned.